Good evening. I will call the meeting of the Wareham School Committee to order. It is Thursday, September 7th. This meeting is being recorded by WCTV and broadcast by WCTV right now. An audio recorded by Jamie Wickston. Would you please stand for the pledge?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, individual for liberty, justice for all.
We will start with public participation. Is there anyone that would like to address the committee? Seeing none, we'll move on to good news. Does anyone have some good news they'd like to share? Joyce?
I just want to say welcome. I know today was the first day of kindergarten and preschool for the youngest students, so welcome to them, welcome to their families. Looking forward to a good year.
Thank you. Dr. D'Andrea?
I'm sure that the principals in every quarter will share lots of good stuff at the beginning of school, which is going very well.
Is your mic on?
Sorry about that. So I just wanted to share that, I just wanted to briefly talk about the roof and the boiler project. The roof is about four days away of, they just have some of the flashing to complete, but the roof is watertight. And they're just gonna do four days of flashing, and then they're gonna do cleanup, and we'll be all set with the roof project. The boiler project's gonna be a little bit longer, they're still waiting on some items that need to come in, pumps and expansion tanks, but everything seems to be going well in that area also, so heading in the right direction.
Thank you. Jeff?
The roof project for next summer, because this was only a partial solution, is it accurate to say it's much bigger?
Yes.
So is it also accurate to say it may take quite a bit longer?
Yeah, you could say, this one, this project got to a later start due to having to wait for certain materials to come in, so I'm hoping that we'll be, they'll be a little bit more strategic in the ordering, so they'll be able to start earlier in the summer, and we won't have an issue of it overlapping into the school year. But it certainly, you know, it will, to answer your question, yes, it will take a longer amount of time to do the second phase of the project.
Is it the same contractor?
Yes.
Already bid and accepted and all that?
Yes.
Thank you. Dr. Schwann?
I just wanted to congratulate Sarah Russo for her obtaining her doctorate degree, so I get very excited when I hear that other people are joining the cause for that, and I'd like to just say congratulations to her. She's the assistant principal at Wareham Elementary School.
Thank you. Agreed. All right, we do not have our student representative here tonight, so there will be no student rep report. Next up on the agenda is CPAC, the Special Education Parent Advisory Council.
May I just, I just want to introduce Jessie Clements. I guess a lot of people know her, I didn't. But for CPAC, it's been a while, I guess, since we've been able to organize our CPAC, and she, and Jessie's been, has stepped up to help us do that, and so I want to thank her for that. And as you know, the CPAC is the advisory board to Melissa Fay's position, Director of Student Support Services, much like school council is advisory to the principal of the building, so welcome.
Thank you. So I do have an intro, and maybe it's more for the superintendent than for any of you, right? So my name is Jessie Clements, I've lived in Wareham since 2003. Laura just graduated last year, she went kindergarten through grade 12. Michael is a ninth grader this year, he started at the East Preschool when he was three years old, right? He, three to 22, right? He's gonna be here for a long time. I've been on school councils when Michael was in preschool and early elementary, I did the CPAC back then, maybe got busy with life and said, no, I'm gonna take a step back, and now that Laura's away at college and there's a little less stress at home, it's like, okay, maybe I can pick this up again. I've also been on interview committees. My husband grew up in Wareham, he's been on interview committees, and he was also on the new building committee for the elementary school. And I've also been in public education, this is my 20th year, high school math teacher and currently administrator. So this is the Wareham, CPAC stands for Special Education Parent Advisory Council. It's interesting to me, I looked up the guidelines, and the most recent guidelines I found from 2010, the word parent, like I wonder if they're gonna make that change to caregiver or family or something, because this isn't, this isn't just about special ed students might have, they may not have their parents, they might have someone different at home taking care of them, so I'm just interested to see if that's, that's a thing that's gonna come up to be changed. So from the guidelines, a couple of highlights of what, when I worked with the CPAC, you know, 10, 15, 10 years ago when Michael was younger, that I don't think we really did, or we really focused on, so a couple of highlights. Membership shall be offered to all parents of children with disabilities and other interested parties. You can all come to meetings. People, you have to be a resident of Wareham, kind of like public participation, right? People can, people can come to these meetings. You don't have to have a student with a disability, you don't have to have a student with an IEP if you live in Wareham, so I feel like that's something that's just interesting, right? It is a community group. Also that the parent advisory council can advise the school committee on things to do with special ed, and meet regularly with school officials around special ed programming and things like that, and I know I didn't do that when, it just wasn't a thing, we were more about having meetings and planning events and things like that, and I do not want to come to every school committee meeting and talk, but I just, I think it's important, right, to just be on the agenda every once in a while, right? And certainly reach out if, if you feel you need to. So those were the highlights from what I see as the guidelines right now. I did look up our special ed data, because I know everyone always says, like, we just, we just have such a significantly larger population compared to the state, but I was like, let me, let me just see. So last year, the 22, 23 data that I found on the DOE website, we have 27% of our students with disabilities in the state's at 19.4, so it's, it's just so, so significant, right? And there's a lot of extra work to do here. So that's kind of an overview of just kind of, kind of me and what the, what the CPAC could be. For this year right now, we're, I talked to Melissa a few times over the summer, and we just want to be really simple with things this year. We do have two events that have already been scheduled, and they're both virtual events on Zoom. We have our basic rights presentation that every district needs to do once a year, that's gonna be offered on Tuesday, October 24th, from 6:00 to 8:00. An email with a registration link was sent out to families, and so what I would say, I, I got some email responses, if families felt like they didn't, if they didn't see it, of course, check the spam junk email, but also connect with the schools and make sure the right email address is in there, because it was sent to all families. The registration link wasn't working initially, it should be working now. So again, that's Tuesday, October 24th, from 6:00 to 8:00, the basic rights presentation. We are having a mental health virtual fair on Tuesday, December 6th, from 6:00 to 7:00 o'clock. The presenters right now are Care Solus, which is a mental health care coordination service, High Point, whose mission is to prevent and treat substance abuse disorders and mental illness, and then a rep from the Attorney General's office will present a DEC initiative presentation. DEC stands for Drug Endangered Children Initiative. And so they'll be, it's only an hour of time, so there'll be very brief presentations, about 10, 15 minutes as it stands right now, but again, that's in December, so we can, we can make some more definite plans as the date comes closer. So those are two scheduled meetings we have, we're hopeful to have five total this year, so in February and April, maybe another kind of Zoom virtual meeting or event, and then what I would like to do in June is have a real planning meeting for the next year. We also sent a survey out to families, again, went, went through email last week or the week before. We have 85 responses so far, thankfully, and what's, what's really cool too is, you know, I haven't gotten into sorting everything yet, but even families, there's a question, does your child have an IEP? And some of the responses said no. And that's, maybe they're, maybe that's something they're looking into, but also maybe it's just interested families, so I was happy to see that some people that maybe might not have family members right now in special education still responding. The questions were pretty basic, would you be more willing to attend virtual meetings, in-person meetings, what time of day, weekdays, weekends, some general stuff, just to kind of see. So that will help with our planning for either the spring or next year. I think another thing that might be interesting to do, and again, I don't know if it's something that we're gonna roll out this year, is just to have some listening sessions, go to areas of town where if transportation's an issue, maybe, might be more accessible for families, and to just hear them out if there are challenges and problems, instead of having a Zoom event all the time. So that might be something that I think, and I think when I did CPAC, again, a long time ago, I feel like that's what a lot of our meetings were, it was like parents kind of getting together and sharing their frustrations, and then it was kind of like, ooh, we should do something about that, and I don't know if that ever happened. And then another thing that I worked, I did work for a year in the Dartmouth Public Schools, and what they did with their CPAC was, they had a liaison from each building that was a staff member, a special ed staff member. I'd like it to be a nonadministrator, like support staff, special ed teacher, one person from each building that could commit to coming to the meetings too, as just that liaison between the group and the building. I don't know any other details around like how that, how that worked, or how they found that person, but if, you know, whoever's watching or listening, if someone's interested, like I think that would be really cool, to have people from the schools involved as well. That's all I have, but do, does anybody have questions or anything?
It sounds like a great start, first of all.
We hope, right?
Joyce?
I don't think I have any questions, but I just want to say thank you for coming forward and taking on this role. Obviously, you're very well-versed and very committed, so really lucky to have you doing this.
Thanks.
I look forward to that. Are there other parents joining you, or?
So that, like, we haven't even had that formal, like, hey, come to a meeting. Like I said, I've emailed, a couple of parents have reached out, more with the registration issues. I mean, when you have a student with significant special needs, like, we have, like, we have our parent group of friends, right, that we've just been friends since the time all our kiddos were three, and so if they don't formally join, like, they're joining by all the, like, when I see them in the parking lots and drop off and things like that, so, so yeah, like, there's a definite community that I have that I'll encourage them to come as much as possible.
Okay, great. Thank you.
So you mentioned that we're about 50% higher than the typical district.
Yeah.
Do you have any insights as to why that would be?
I knew you were gonna ask, like, when I wrote it down, I'm like, Jeff's gonna ask me about, I don't, I don't.
I hate to be predictable.
I don't. Well, I feel like that, I wonder if that's an analysis that has been done, like, in the district, like, that, I just, I don't know.
Well, I asked Melissa that question, and she, she was only speculating, but I was, and the reason I asked you, because I respect you, and I thought you might have, because you're not just a parent, you're also an educator.
Right, right.
So it's just, you know, it's, and, and it has grown over the decades. We used to be, believe it or not, less than 100%, or less, an average district.
I was surprised at 27%, like, I, I knew it was higher, I didn't think it was that much higher. I mean, maybe through conversations with families, we can get that information. I don't, I don't know, but I knew you would ask some kind of data.
I'm glad I didn't disappoint you.
No, right, right. As I'm like walking the dog when I got home, it's like, what, what might Jeff ask me, so? So it's a really good question, and so if I can help get to the bottom of it, I think that's.
Can you, and I haven't asked this of anybody else, and it's, it's probably not a fair question, but do you have any insight as to the, and I didn't ask Melissa this either, as to the nature of the IEPs and the disabilities, have they evolved over the years?
So types of disabilities, I, so that I don't know, but it's actually another thing that I know everyone here knows this, but also, like, when we talk about students with disabilities and students with IEPs, I mean, that is a significantly disabled student that you can look at and say, yep, like, they have an extra adult with them, they're, they're, they're walking slower, although improving, like Mr. Palladino said, like, you, there are some kiddos, right, that you see the disabilities, and then the others with a specific math or English disability, like, when we, when we're talking about special ed, like, this is everybody, and that's who we're trying to support, but I don't know the answer to that question either. But I just wanted to make sure I pointed out that special ed means, like, there's a, just a huge range of types of disabilities, but I also don't know what that looks like in the school.
When you talk to parents, did it give you any insight as to whether the process of identification of children that need an IEP has evolved and become more aggressive?
So I, having Michael, he's a student who, I feel like, the, the parents that I know in that circle, like, are, I don't think it was a challenging process, I think it was a pretty smooth process to get the services that, that students need. I do wonder when it's a student with, who's struggling in school, and how, how that process happens when, when it's not totally clear that the student has a disability, I'm not sure how that process looks, because I don't, I, I haven't had conversations with parents in that, that realm.
I share, Joyce, in my admiration for the work you do on behalf of Wareham.
Thank you.
D'Andrea?
I just wondered if there was a, there was a way to promote the idea of a group of parents helping other parents, or have those parents help our staff, and remind them of the complexities of the meetings, and identifying whatever the issue might be. It's very confusing and arduous for a lot of people, and we throw around acronyms, like, right? Because that's how we, we speak to one another, and I think that often, parents get lost in the, in the processes, and they show up, and there's a whole table full of people that they don't know, and they're all school people. It's just sort of a very daunting and frightening experience, and I think, I, I wonder if there's a way to sort of begin to help everyone feel better about it being a team, and that everyone has a voice in the team, and that, I don't know, just, I think it's, it's a huge problem, and I'm not saying it's just Wareham, I've helped kids and families in other districts, just because, I just think it's very difficult. It's a difficult process.
So when, when Melissa and I one time this summer were brainstorming topics, like, that's definitely something that popped into my head, is just knowing how to, which parts of the IEP should you really focus on to know, like, what, what should be happening in school, for example, and things like that. So I do agree with you, I think, I think that's an important topic for maybe some more experienced parents can even help, help some newbies. And, and I mean, I experienced that too, I remember, you know, sitting at various appointments, and just you start to talk to parents in the waiting room, and you learn a lot, and I feel like, you know, my husband and I have the resources to kind of research different things about, you know, disability insurance and things like that, and then you sit with a parent and, and you learn something, and it's like, oh man, I wish I knew that, like, I could have started that five years ago. So you're right, like, to your point, there, there are always things, and so I think, as much communication as the school can provide in that special ed realm for parents, but also, yeah, I think parents kind of sharing their experiences and helping other new parents is, is important, and something we brainstormed, so.
So Jessie, if there were parents out there that wanted support or had questions, how would they get in touch with you? What's the best way?
So my email address, or actually, there's a, there's a CPAC email, I think it's warehamcpac@gmail.com, but don't hold me to that, I can certainly, like, we can put that information out, but I, I believe that even with the previous person who was managing the CPAC, I think there was like the generic CPAC email.
And we could probably get that information, if it's not already on our website.
Yeah, put it, put it out there.
When you communicate with parents, do you include that?
In the, in the two pieces of information, that hasn't been put out yet, so we can also include that in the survey and the registration link too. So yeah, we can add that in.
Again, thank you for stepping up to the plate, and I imagine good things will follow. Thank you.
We will do our best. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, next up, we have the principals' reports. Which one of you would like to go first tonight? I will tell my fellow committee members that these initial reports are kind of general in nature, going forward, there's gonna be specific topics that will be addressed on a regular basis, but tonight, in light of the fact that you've been in school for a whopping, I don't know, three or four days, we'll just start with an overview. Thank you.
Oh, thank you, school committee. Of course, I'm Bethany Chandler, the principal of Wareham Elementary School, and we welcomed 937 students to begin. We've had some students leave us and some students come in, so it's been a little bit of a revolving door in the later summer months, but currently 937, I'll break that down for you. In grade four, we have 168 students, grade three, 163, grade two, 175, grade one, 178, kindergarten, 174, and preschool, 79. So there's our breakdown of our enrollment for our grades. We had an exciting start, very, very wonderful start, smooth start, and today was kindergarten, so we welcomed our 174 kindergartners today, they looked ready. This cohort is a very poised group, you can always tell by the lunchroom. It was just a very quiet, poised, they seemed to already know where to go and what to do, so we're excited about the kindergartners, and of course, we had 79 preschoolers begin. We have an additional preschool staff member, we've always had a 5.5, now we're opened up to, it's six, so we have an additional staff member now in preschool, so we've opened up one more class there. Wareham Elementary looks forward to, two open houses we're going to have, the first being for grades one through four next Thursday at 5:30 PM on the 14th, and then the second is going to be for our preschool and kindergarten, and we do it more of a showcase, because of course, we have the opportunity to have orientations this past week, so each of the preschool families and kindergarten families have already met the teacher and gone through a sort of open house, so we do a workshop on October 5th of a showcase, so to speak, of their beginning student work. We opened this year, very excited with some new curriculum materials, much thanks to Dr. Schwamm. We have ordered and brought in, and it's all in, thanks to the department chairs, assistant principals as well. Amplify is our new literacy program, K through four, so it is vertical alignment, we're very excited. I did a nice walkthrough, I saw it being implemented throughout, it's online, textbooks, a lot of writing, and I'm very, very excited about this program, and I look forward to having some of you see it as well. In addition to that, not only do we have a new reading program we're implementing in Wareham Elementary, we also have an aspect from a program called Bridges, it's a math program, and we're doing number corner, and it's just a facet of the full program, but number corner is a 20, 25-minute segment of Bridges where students gather together in a meeting, and they review, and they review, it's kind of like a morning meeting, but it's very dynamic, and our teachers have set up their corners, it's, it's literally a corner, where they go through a very daily routine. Just one aspect of the math curriculum, we're still working with in visions, but this number corner, I really like what I see. It takes away the traditional morning meeting, you know how we've done the calendar before. Now our students don't have a typical traditional calendar, but it's symbolic. In fourth grade today, I was looking at symbols that the students have to interpret, and it's, it's, I think it's Egyptian, some symbols from their mathematics, so it's very dynamic, I'm very, very excited to see all of these programs implemented in our school fidelity, and really, that's what's happening so far at Wareham Elementary. I do want to say before I leave here today, a huge thanks, huge, huge thanks to the secretaries who have worked diligently throughout the summer to make sure our class lists are ready, worked in Power School to create schedules, and done a lot of the back work to make sure we have a smooth opening, which we did. I want to thank the custodians, we've had a retirement, and we've had, just, we've been a little bit short, and they've worked very, very hard to make sure our school is clean and ready. I want to say thank you to the teachers, the paraprofessionals, some of whom who worked when we didn't even have school, paraprofessionals included, coming in to prepare and make sure that our school is not just ready, but excellently ready for the start of the school year. And I also, thanks to technology and the district office too, for all that they've done to make sure we had a grand opening, of which we did. And I'll take questions at this time.
Jeff?
Hi.
Jeff?
Last summer, not, not the one we feel like we're still in, but the, a year ago, we had significant issues with the HVAC system, and I'm told by, let's see, I guess it was the superintendent, I'm trying to remember who gave me the, oh. It was Kristen, yes, how could I remember? Kristen, who became an HVAC technician over the summer, that some of those problems still existed in the building this past summer, and maybe are still existing as we speak. Could you comment on that?
Sure. So when we met as a school building committee, we did the HVAC, we did per room, right? So the circular air, this is what I can comment on, as much as I know about HVAC.
Well, no, no, I'm not asking you, I'm not, I'm asking for your impression as an administrator of how things are going with the HVAC system.
They're going well. We have Eric Trahan, our facilities director, is on top of it all the time, and our, so is our HVAC, who's our HVAC, right? Help me.
Robbie.
Robbie, thank you. Robbie, they've been working through it. It's just very technical, it's high-tech, so there's a lot, each room has its own vibe to it, because of the.
You say vibe?
Yep, the circulation.
Okay.
Because of the way the circulation comes in and out. You can walk into one room, it's, it's cooler, and then you walk into the next room, it's much warmer, and so.
This is good?
It's, yeah.
This is the way we envisioned it, is that really?
It's fascinating, because it's, so it's compartmentalized, right? So each room has its own circulation, so some rooms have had some problems to it, of which we can fix, and we have fixed, while others' rooms don't. However, the cafeteria, the gymnasium, we have the other HVAC, which is the air flows all the way through and circulates through, and so, yeah, and so that, we seem to have more of a balance, and that's what I can say.
Sounds like.
Although it was very cool today, and very, very luxurious day at Wareham Elementary School, I'd like to say thank you. As a matter of fact, I was just with a parent, and one of my students said to the parent, it was actually quite cool at our school today, and I was like, it was so, it works well.
There's two, I have two comments, then I'll go to my next question. One is, sounds like you're making lemonade out of lemons, because it doesn't sound great to me, number one.
Yeah.
And number two, the, the electricity bill has been off the charts from a budget perspective, so that's not good either. So that's the school committee perspective, I appreciate your perspective. You mentioned this new curriculum, and you mentioned vertical alignment as though this was a really good thing.
Yeah.
As a school committee member, I sort of assume we have vertical alignment, so why did you make a point of saying that we have vertical alignment?
Well, it's programmatic. Before that, you know, we had standards that are always vertical, we have, but this is materials that are vertically aligned, so it's, so it's not standardized, it's programmatic, so the materials are all aligned vertically.
So do we have a similar situation for literacy?
It is literacy, the K through four is literacy, the program, it's pre, right.
Oh, I thought you were talking about math.
No, math, we have a number.
All right, sorry, my mistake. Math was the number, corner thing.
I mean, the standards already provide a vertical alignment for us, because it's, it's grade by grade. grade by grade, but this time, we have a program that also does it for us. So we're not taking materials from, you know, taking materials from here, taking materials from there, and reusing, we're using this program.
So with math, you have to create the vertical alignment from the standards, whereas this is already created for you? It's just easier for the teacher?
I guess in a way. I mean, we have invisions, but that is in the upper grades. We don't have invisions in the lower grades.
Two.
Yeah, we do. They don't like it. Yeah.
We had reach for reading for everyone, they didn't like it, the lower grades and the upper grades, like there was just a lot of complexity.
They didn't like it. I think I won't, I don't think I'm going to touch that.
[laughing]
And finally, are you involved at all in Sentry?
In Sentry?
Not yet.
That's just the middle school?
Yep.
Thank you. Thank you.
Joyce?
I am not going to ask you any questions because I'm sure you've been very busy for the last couple of weeks, so I just, well, much longer than that, but you know what I mean, at the beginning of school. So I just want to say thank you for being here tonight. I love that you thanked everyone in the building for getting everything ready for the start of school. I heard you say you came here from your own son's open house, so thank you very much for being here tonight.
Thank you. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Good evening.
Hey.
Ms. Pate, Wareham Middle School. We have had a wonderful start. We have about 410 students, in grade five, 139, in grade six, 153, and in grade seven, 118. Thirty-two students withdrew this summer and 33 students enrolled. And I have about three more to enroll, so they just keep coming. Open house tonight, it was very well attended. The PTA had a book fair that also has been very well attended. The book fair continues tomorrow. We have begun on NUIA testing in math this week, so we're right into the thick of things at Wareham Middle School, and it's just been a lovely start. It has been an awful hot start at Wareham Middle School because probably about 40% of our building has AC, so the rest of us suffered in some very hot rooms this afternoon. But I have to say, the kids fared well. I don't know if they noticed it as much as the adults, but it was a great day. I would also like to thank everyone. It's amazing on how much work goes into starting a year, how much the hiring process and just getting everything ready, it really does take a village, and we have a beautiful school, and it was a great start, so. Questions and concerns?
Do you typically start that testing, like NUIA, in the first week? Have you done that before?
Yeah, I'd like to start it the first day, actually, but yes.
Okay, so this is done, you've done this before?
Yes.
Does this get a baseline of where they're at?
We're just getting, we're just getting the baseline. Of course, we want to get a true baseline. We want the children to try their best. We start with math because we'd like to really dive deep right away, and then ELA will go next week.
Any questions?
So again, I know I'm not going to ask you any questions, I'm just going to thank you for being here after having such a hot day and an open house. I really appreciate you being here.
Thank you.
Jeff?
So even the New York Times thought talking about public school attendance was worth an article, and they were bemoaning across the nation, public school attendance by students. Have we had a good start? No, I don't mean in official numbers, just, just
At the middle school, we've had a wonderful start. Our attendance has been awesome for the last five days, so [laughing].
Great.
I really hope to continue that. The counselors and I spent some time on that this summer. We're going to send out our first letter on chronically absent students from the year before and say, "What can we do to help you, to support you, to support your child?" So those will go out next week, and really, just, you know, looking at, at, just encouraging children to come. I mean, chronically absent is 18 or more. I had 93 students last year in grade six, seven, and, five, six, and seven that were chronically absent. Ninety-three. So that means 93 of our students missed 18 or more days.
It's not just you. You're right. It's awful.
So, I mean, that makes me sick, you know? And there's still those ones that weren't chronically absent, but they missed 17, 16, 15. So, I mean, it's, it's hard enough teaching children in 180 days, just 180 days, you know? That's not even half a year. That's all we get with them. And then to have that many absences is, it's a struggle.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thanks, Tracy.
Thank you.
Thank you, Tracy.
Mr. Palladino.
Scott Bell, you know Wareham High School principal. Thanks for having me, and I'll just echo a lot of sentiments that have been said. It really, ironically, was a great start for the high school as well. And, you know, just as my colleagues have said, just the teamwork that went into being ready for day one, from the clerical staff, to the central administrative support, to the custodians, to the administrators, just getting everything ready, it was great. And we definitely benefited from having no snow days, and having the extra two weeks to get things prepared. That was just a huge jump for us to get so much done before the 4th of July, before summer school started. There was a big key for us to be ready for day one, so knock on wood, let's hope for no snow this winter. So we had, as I mentioned, an awesome start. It was great to have all the staff in place prior to the start of the school year. I cannot say that has been done in many years, and it was definitely well before the pandemic where I could say that. We're really excited for the new hires. We think we found some really great people that are going to fit in really well with our students and our culture. All of our orders have been received, which is great. With the supply chain issues in the last few years, that was troubling, and we were receiving supplies well into the fall. We created a new schedule last year. It's not too much different than last year's schedule, but basically, it puts the lunch one period later in the day, which is very strategic, and it's worked out really well so far, although I'm not sure my cafeteria workers feel that way. But I do see an increase in participation in lunch and breakfast, which is not the intended consequence or side effect for this change, but it's certainly going to be a beneficial one. And our schedule was, we spent a lot of time on the schedule in the winter, spring, and early part of the summer, to really make sure it's maximized for efficiency, and we were able to extract a couple new electives out of that schedule by being even more efficient. I just want to give a shout out to Transportation. I think they've done an awesome job this year. It's been a great start with Transportation, unlike any of the last four years. And I also know that there are a lot more parents putting their students on the buses because Viking Drive is not as chaotic in the morning or afternoons as it, as it had been in previous years. One of our goals, which I understand you heard about at the last school committee meeting from our student rep, is reemphasizing the cell phone policy. And it's been with, you know, the SCL and coming back from the pandemic, I think a couple of policies have been put on the back burner, and that's one we are reemphasizing. Dr. DeAndrea and I had a chance to walk through all of the hot classrooms yesterday. Bethany, we do not have 100% air conditioning. We don't have 40% either, Tracy. We have 10%. The kids have really been troopers, and the staff as well with that, with that heat. But it was really great to see, I don't think we saw a single cellphone out, we went into about 15 classrooms anyway. And obviously, it's, as Mr. Pizzoli said earlier, it's the first week, we've had four days of school, so we're certainly not going to post any banners, but we're heading in the right direction, and we have a soon-to-be committee that we'll be posting to further explore procedures and policies for cell phones that could be reflected in our handbook next spring when we bring it in front of you. But so far, so good on that. As you're probably aware, fall sports have started, games started this week, football starts tomorrow. I'm really impressed with the, with the participation rates in comparison to previous years. It seems like we're in a good place to have sub-vocity teams, which we haven't always had for all sports, and volleyball continues to strive and have three teams again this year. Clubs start meeting this week and next week after school, and our enrollment breakdown is as follows. Eighth grade, 166 students, ninth grade, 125, 10th grade, 117, 11th grade, 80, 12th grade, 89, 13th grade, 12. Right now, we have 589 students, and we have a lot more coming in every day for enrollment. And it seems like when the buses run, people come in and decide to register their students. As Dr. DeAndrea mentioned, the boiler system is a couple weeks away from being up and running. Our new phone system has been installed by the Technology Department with some help from HVAC and plumbing, and will be tied into the Verizon mainline very shortly, so we're excited about that. This was a huge need for us. We had over 12 classrooms that didn't have operating phones at the end of the last school year. We're excited to bring back several electives into our, into our realm, including integrated arts and science, social media, marketing, broadcasting, and an inclusion IB ELA class this year. We also brought back our core math this year, and as you know, late last year, we brought back our core ELA classes. We have Study Sync and Illustrated Math programs that have been infused into the curriculum respectively. Our open house is two weeks from tonight, and we're excited to continue with this momentum that we've garnered. Certainly would love to answer any questions you may have.
Joyce?
Well, thank you for being here, and I do just have one question for you.
Okay.
You mentioned the phone system. Did the whole building get new phones, or just those, okay, so
The whole building, it's, it's, it's great, and there's a lot of options that I still haven't figured out on these phones, and they can, you can tie them into your cell phone. It's really, you know, our, our system is 30
Well, I know that was much needed there, yes.
It's pretty cool what we can do, and I'm sure there's more that I need to learn on the phones. But it's exciting to have a phone where you can actually hear, and it's not crackling, and it's not embarrassing to have conversations with parents on, so it's, it was needed, and it was great to have it rolled out. Still working through a few kinks, obviously, but nothing too crazy.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Jeff?
So, seems like the last meeting I was in, you were talking about having insufficient number of applicants for the positions, and yet I'm thrilled to hear that the new staff that you have are working out really well, so
Four days into school.
Okay.
No, we're, we're excited for the staff. I, I think we've got some really good people that we're really looking forward to seeing them work with our students. Obviously, we haven't really been into too many classrooms, other than just coming in and checking the environment out. As we go through the observations, you know, that's kind of where the rubber meets the road.
You made a point of mentioning the word "your culture," and I agree, every school probably has a culture led by the principal. How would you, and please don't quote the strategic plan, how would you describe the culture of the high school?
I would describe it as very inclusive, everyone is accepted, supportive as well. Our students and staff are very supportive. Everyone is, on the staff side, is always willing to do whatever's needed to support the students. The things that go on that you don't read about, you don't see are amazing. When there's ever anyone in need, everyone steps up and supports the students, and that need could mean so many different things throughout the year, whether it's just needing a little extra push to get their college applications out, or a little extra push to get themselves confident about the EM CAS or SAT, or maybe even just a little push just because they're kind of down and out. So this, it's, it's really a cool environment, and it's tough to encapsulate in a few words unless you've been there for a while. I know Coach Pizzoli had a chance to be there, and he kind of saw it, and it's really not much different now than when he was there, and
I know one of your teachers who
It's special.
I know, I think I mentioned this to you, I know one of your new teachers who came last January is thrilled to be there.
We, we love hearing that.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks.
All right, thank you.
I don't think you're going anywhere, though. [laughing] So now, we have the spring sports report, which you have given us, and the fall sports update, and I guess the AD is not available tonight, correct?
Mr. Roderick's unfortunately couldn't be here. He wanted to move, move it to next, the next meeting, and I encouraged him to do what he needed to do, and I, that I felt I could handle this, but he will definitely be there for our, our fall review of sports. But I can certainly talk about the fall sports after I talk about this. I, I just want to highlight, if I can, a, a couple of things. I'm always very impressed with the GPAs of all the students, and it's just amazing when you see that. And then, Mr. Swett, again, he thought he had some competition, but I think he blew it out of the water with his girls tennis team once again. But just when you see those GPAs, it's just very impressive. They are truly student athletes, and when you see, you know, basically, a B-plus or better, minus boys tennis team with a B, but basically, B or better, an average of over B-plus by all the teams, it's really impressive. So I want to mention that first and foremost. I also want to mention, you know, we're seeing improvement across the board in all sports and all seasons, but it was really cool to see the softball team qualify for the state tournament. The tennis team, obviously, not only qualified, but win a game in the state tournament, and the other programs kind of up and coming. And I also want to mention the boys track team, because when you have two state champions in five years, that's impressive, and they had two state champions in one year. I mean, that is very impressive. We talk about the boys basketball team winning the state championship, and that's a team. Track's a little more individual, but to have two state champions in the building, on the team, very impressive. And I want to mention Aiden Roberts and Diego Mello. And I also want to mention, Diego won the 400 hurdles after he was a part of the state championship basketball team, and I always kid him, I said, "No one had a better year athletically than you. How are you going to top that?" And you know, he said to me, "I joined the soccer team this year. That's how I'm going to top that." Just great kids, and unbelievable spring season for all them, and it was, it was great to see the progress, and we'll anticipate continuing to see that progress. Certainly, I know you have the spreadsheet. Want to thank Sandy Barbosa for handling all aspects of the billing and many other aspects of the athletic department, and Ed Roderick, who I want to remind you is a part-time employee, yet he puts in a full-time effort during the school year, and, and he's even in there in the summertime. And we could never do it without the two of them, and we're very fortunate to have them. And again, you know, Ed doesn't get paid as a full-time employee, but he does a great job, and we're lucky to have him as well, especially as we transition into a new league.
Any questions? Joyce?
Well, first, thank you. I'm sorry that Ed isn't here. I always like hearing what he has to say. So I, I'm so glad to hear you talk about the boys track team, because that really stuck out to me, right? We, we hear a lot about girls tennis, and we hear a lot about boys basketball, rightly so, but the accomplishments of this team this season were amazing, the records and the championships, so I'm glad you mentioned them. And it's real, it's clear that there are so many coaches in that high school who are so dedicated to these students, winning seasons, losing seasons, smaller teams, whatever, you know, they're, they're really dedicated. We're really fortunate, thankful to have them all there. But I do have a couple of questions. So when he says on here, like, let's just say baseball is first, it says 16 participants for eighth graders. Does that mean there were 16 altogether, or 20 altogether?
I, hang on one second, let me just look on this. So we're looking at baseball. That, I do not believe that includes, Coach Swett, maybe you can help me on this. It said you had 19 with three eighth graders.
That includes the eighth graders.
That include, thank you.
So 19's the total?
Yes.
Okay.
Thank you.
All right. And then, so I was just looking, I'm like, oh, I wonder what that total is, and then I realized he had totaled it, but it doesn't add up. So maybe just next time, he could, so it says here, there were 87 students, but if I add up all the teams, it adds up to 121.
Yes, I, I thought that was correct.
We got a new math program.
Yeah, all right, so that'll be, all right.
I, 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 we did have that fixed, but you're right, it's over 100.
Which is great. It's not just 87, it's
Yeah, it was corrected. I guess the pot, the one that got sent over to you was an old one.
Okay. Maybe that was from last year or something, so
No, no, the, the, yeah, the numbers, when, like you said, when you look at each team are accurate. Unfortunately, it didn't carry over to the overall on your sheet.
Okay, all right. And then my other question, did you already talk about the spreadsheet?
No, we're on it now.
Oh, all right. Should I ask that question now?
Please do.
All right, so obviously, we're all operating, you're all operating on a limited budget in every area, including athletics, right? So I'm just curious, when you go into the year, do you say, "Well, we're going to spend this much on this team and this much on that team"? No? Okay. Well, because, just, just looking at two teams, baseball and softball, one's boys, one's girls, right? This year, $750 was spent on uniforms and equipment for softball, and, can't read it, 1600 was, 1650 was spent on baseball.[1763.33] And, can't read it, 1,600 was, 1,650 was spent on baseball. So I thought, well, maybe last year it was the opposite. Maybe it just goes back and forth every year. But last, so I looked up last year, and last year, 722 was spent on softball and 2,000 was spent on baseball. So, you know me, I like to compare.
Yeah.
I like everyone to get the same.
She's a Title IX person.
I know that what, what creates, what gets these numbers upside down is we have a rot- and I don't, I anticipate that's for one of the years, but I don't know why it'd be for two years. I'll have to ask Ed that.
Yeah.
But the, we have a rotation. Basically, what we try to do is every season, replace uniforms for one team.
Right.
So theoretically, you know, every four or five years, the teams are getting new uniforms. So I know that creates one group to be upside down, but it could be something like a, and I, again, I don't know for sure, but I know if a pitching machine goes down, that's over $1,000. So if they needed that one year, and then the uniforms for the next, that, that could be the case. I know uniforms are one of them, I just don't know which year it was.
Okay.
But the, you know, to go back to your question earlier, it's really a needs-based budget, what they need. So for instance, if you kind of continue on the grid, and you look at track, and you say, "Wow, they didn't get anything." But what happens, what's nice about track is in the winter, track meets and they, and they receive the supplies they needed in the winter, and they were able to carry that over into the spring. So Ed does a really good job of trying to balance that out and making sure that the needs of the teams are met based on what's going on and participation. And I think he's very fair and cognizant of Title IX and making sure that he is supportive of both male and female programs. The, the tough part is, you know, different sports require different things to participate. Baseball and softball are pretty comparable, but like, you know, when you look at football, when we come back in the winter, there's a lot of safety equipment that soccer doesn't need, so it's, it's not on par. Every team doesn't get the same amount.
Well, and that's another reason why I compared those two, because they are pretty comparable, right?
Definitely.
Yeah, okay.
Jeff?
Well, I was just going to say, you might be surprised to know that there are disposable things in that line item. Not just, uniforms are obviously not disposable.
Right.
Equipment is not disposable, but the entire amount under girls tennis is tennis balls. And tennis balls don't get reused.
Right.
Okay? So I don't know how much, whether a softball is the same price as a baseball, but they're probably close to a disposable item. And that, and that can vary, and I can also tell you the cost of things is-
Oh, I know. Yeah, I know.
So.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
I just have one more, not totally related to the report, but related to athletics, so Booster Club, right? Really struggling, so looking forward to this year, to hopefully getting some people involved, and hopefully you and Ed will be able to, to help with that, because I hate to see it disappear, and at this rate, it will disappear.
We, we need to get people that have kids involved in sports, not people that had kids involved in sports.
Right. And we're all happy to do it.
Right. But you, there's a lot of people that have been doing it for many years, and we need some people to step up. I agree.
We'd love to get more, yeah. I mean, I was hoping that, you know, meet the coaches, be a person, so we could capture them there, but it's not, so.